So, in the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of the building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the door to my right by pulling the fire alarm located to the right door under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask that everyone please silence your cellphones. Public comments will be heard on any of the topics presented this evening after each item. Please complete a form provided at the table by the entrance and please give it to the city clerk. You will have four minutes for your public comment. We do ask that you do make all of your remarks and then save time at the end for direction from or comments back from the person sitting at the table. At this time, we welcome the city administrator, Andy Kitrow, and field operations director, Mike Dryden, for a conversation, a discussion on city trash collection delays and fleet issues.
Hello, everybody. It's easier for me to sit here than making everybody turn sideways since it's going to probably be a fruitful conversation. I'm going to kind of take the lead on a lot of this discussion. I know there has been a lot going on this past week in terms of sanitation, especially with our trash collection during this holiday season. Mike is the director of field operations. Everybody knows Mike, but he is here to kind of outline a little bit about what has been going on, what will be going on, and the plan moving forward. But I do want to highlight, this is not a new conversation. We've been before council here multiple times here in the last several weeks talking about an ongoing issue we have with sanitation, specifically with our fleet. And the fleet being something that is in desperate need of repair. We are behind on some of our inventory that should be here in the upcoming spring months. We have recently passed a couple budget ordinances to get additional funding, to help with some of these ongoing maintenance costs and labor costs to try to keep up with demand. We did hit kind of a perfect storm right before Christmas Day with another catastrophic failure of our inventory and our fleet, putting us kind of in a jammed-up period of time. Also, on the eve of our busiest sanitation collection week annually, which is the week between Christmas and New Year. So, a lot going on. I'm going to let Mike jump in, talk a little bit about what's been going on, but then it's definitely open for discussion with you all and the additional follow-up conversations or questions you have for us. But yeah, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, as everyone knows, we've been dealing with hardship in our sanitation division. We noticed this really came into effect probably in August. We started seeing the trucks really decaying and starting to break down more regularly. We do have three trucks that are coming. Supply chain has been the biggest issue here. We're waiting for these trucks. When we order them, it takes two years to build them. We had a conversation last week with one of our vendors. Even a dump truck, it's going to be four years before we can receive a dump truck. So, that's how the bottleneck is with the manufacturing of these vehicles. Right now, we have leased a front loader which arrived today, which is a larger construction equipment with a bucket in the front, which we're using to toss trash in and then meet a dump truck at the end of the street to dump it. We're hoping to have a rear-loading trash truck here this week. And then our neighbors in Berlin have offered to assist us with their rear loader next week. So, they'll provide us with a driver and then we have the manpower to help with that. So, with everything that we have planned, scheduled, that's here and arriving, I'm hoping to be out of this mess within a week and a half. We'll be back on our regular schedule, back on track. That's the goal right now. That's the route we're headed towards. I have every single person at field operations out helping. These guys, they're coming in at 6:30 tomorrow morning. That is Street Park, everybody that we have to help with this problem. So, I think, again, the light is at the end of the tunnel. We're there. Equipment's coming. And I just appreciate the patience. I know it's been an inconvenience for our citizens here in Salisbury. We are working to meet this demand. And like I said, I think we're coming close.
I also just want to give a, you know, echo Mike's point with his staff. You know, we were graciously able to have off the 26th of December. Our field operations did not take off. They worked. They came in on that holiday, away from the family, to make sure that we continued with this process. The only day they've not been picking up trash has been on the 25th, on actual Christmas Day. So, we're taking it seriously. We know this is a big issue. We know it's inconvenienced a lot of people. Room for improvement on our communication, be a little bit more proactive with some of our communication, but we didn't want to give out false information or mislead people. You know, my trash has been sitting out for five days and it's like, when's it going to be picked up? It's coming. We don't want to say like, hey, it's coming on Saturday and it not be picked up till Monday. But we feel like we have a pretty strong plan moving forward and we should be back in rhythm here within a week or so. With that being said, we're going to maintain our relationships that we have with Berlin and potentially even call on other people if they're available. The three other trucks are not here yet. We still have a whole bunch of old equipment. Keeping our fingers crossed, we don't have any more additional malfunctions with our maintenance, but we should have back to our fleet that is operational here within a couple weeks and barring any other major setbacks. But we've seen what's happened and we have a plan to move forward if this was to happen again. But as we mentioned, supply chain issue has been the complicating factor here in this repair and maintenance, lead times. We'll talk more about lead times when it comes to budget.
Any comments or questions from council?
What is the ETA?
Yes, yes, April. I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson.
I'm glad to hear this news. I'm glad to hear that you have helped from other municipalities. And I couldn't remember, and I can't remember, how long has it been since we ordered the fleet?
Fiscal year '24 is when the orders were put in.
Okay. And I have a question that I know, did we not see the trash trucks and the age of them? Did we not see this coming?
I think it's one of those situations where, did we see it coming? We knew we had an aging fleet, hence why we sped up and did the ordinance 2774 back in January to order three trucks, two side loaders and a rear loader. Knowing that this is what we needed to do, I don't think we, and what we're finding out more so, is account for construction, manufacturing delays. What once was months has now become several months, if not years. We've seen this with our fire engines, our large capital pieces of equipment. Lead times are just so much longer. What was six months is 18 months. That's probably something that we need to think about as we budget, is we don't get inventory as fast as Mike mentioned. It can be two to three years to get a dump truck just because of supply chain. So, we need to start thinking about not our needs today, but our needs three years from now and budgeting accordingly. So, that's something that, that's a lesson we learned here specifically. Also, which wasn't mentioned earlier is, you know, a lot of people are asking, well, what about using private companies and, you know, outsourcing some of this to them? We've called everybody, talked to those processes. Mike can give you some of the numbers, but it wasn't very cost-effective.
Yeah. Some of the private contractors that we reached out to is, we got quidged for $3 to $5 million annually for our citywide trash pickup.
Yeah, there wasn't necessarily an interest in being able to do a short-term lease. Hey, come help us out for a month, charge us for, you know, 30 days because they have their own inventory and their own route. So, they would have to bring in additional vehicles or additional specs to be able to do that. So, they weren't interested in a short-term fix to help us out. But, you know, it's something we can continue to explore, see if there's opportunities there. But I think sanitation overall is going to be a bigger conversation as we get into budget, just understanding the investment it takes to upgrade our fleet so we can avoid this in the future. Did I answer your question, April?
Yes, it does, but I just, you know, and one thing I want to make sure is that constituents understand and are pleased with what we've come forward with and that they are patient with the city and Field Ops.
Councilman McGregor?
Yeah, that was kind of part of my question. I wanted to know if we had an ETA on when we'll be getting those trucks. I know we've said delays, but you said spring. Do we have anything definitive? Is there a contracted date that they've said that they're going to get these trucks to us?
We're being told March.
March?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to thank the work that you guys have been doing. I know they've been working double time. I know this is hard. I wouldn't want to try and lift some of those trash cans, especially mine, up into these trucks. So, they're to be commended for doing that with, you know, the equipment failures and that sort of thing. Are there any other fixes that we could do other than, like you said, you explored the private companies. Are there any other options that you've looked into?
What are you doing at 6:30 tomorrow morning?
Fair, fair.
But in all seriousness, you can rent equipment, which are dump trucks, which, again, we've got a gracious partner in Berlin who's looking to do that. We can pay to rent them from a private company, if that was even an option for super-premium cost. That's not on the table right now without an extended window, multiple months beyond our actual needs. And then it's, you know, trying, there is then looking at alternative ways of picking up trash. I mean, we have taken dump trucks, we'll remove salt bodies off of dump trucks, and front loaders throwing things into the front of a truck. There's a viral video going around of us in operations doing that. I mean, I commend the guys for thinking creatively there, but it is just, you know, all hands-on-deck trying to figure out a complex problem because time is not on our side.
Yeah. I'm not sure how much I can fit in my SUV, but I'll, 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 and there was another question I wanted to add. Oh, communication. You know, we've talked before about communication and lack of community. I think that's been the major frustration that I've been hearing from constituents has been, they're not hearing a timetable, they're not hearing these numbers. And I think, you know, we've put out a couple of press releases, but not everybody's on Facebook. I've gotten calls from constituents who I've just literally had to read the press releases too because they hadn't seen them, you know. Are we activating things like our neighborhood email? I know we've got like a newsletter that goes out once a month. Could we use that as a means of communication for emergency purposes, like this sort of thing?
Yeah, that's a great point that you brought up. We have a relatively newer comms team, a new mayor's office, even a new council here, and understanding our rhythm of communicating effectively with the public through emergency situations. You know, this is on the heels of the catastrophic flooding we had.
Right.
Here, where people are still trying to navigate Route 13 in Northwood and, you know, what does that look like? Our internal team had a meeting today, we have a follow-up meeting on Thursday, to really try to dive in on how are we going to effectively communicate proactively, but then also continuously throughout the course of an incident that's happening. We've made modifications to our website, so it's a clickable banner that gives you kind of updates in real time, using all of our social media outlets, our text message app. But really kind of understanding if we know something's going to happen, a snowstorm, flooding, a major issue, what is our response, not only with our office, our comms team, our administrative team to answer phone calls, but also the teams that are impacted who may be also feeling those questions. But then also, what's the rhythm?
Right.
How much are we sending? What are we, how are we communicating with the media? How's the mayor being involved in that conversation? Keeping people kind of informed whenever there is an update. The hardest thing is when you don't necessarily have a concrete path forward, is to give kind of false hope or a misdirection. And that's where we struggle this time, is we didn't necessarily know when we would have leased equipment or have these partnerships. So, we were, we don't want to over-promise, under-deliver.
Right.
In this situation. So, yeah, it was a little bit of, just kind of leave your trash out. We're hoping to get to it in a couple of days, but I know that was really frustrating for a lot of people.
Right, yeah. I think, I think just not everybody's on social media and that sort of thing. And I think utilizing email lists and things like that that we might have might be another option as well. I'd love to see us start getting creative with the comms and that sort of thing. You know, that's, that's something that's under the housing department, but I'm sure Mire wouldn't mind us tapping, you know, tapping in there.
Yeah, just to echo on that, we have several different streamlines of communication points. Whether you're receiving the community newsletter, yes, then a monthly newsletter, but we have that bank of people.
Right.
So, let's send it out to those neighborhoods so that they know and then that person can disseminate it from that. Downtown, like, so there's several different listservs or distribution lists that we could probably hit to try to reach the most amount of people.
That might be good.
Yep.
I think that would be, that would be something that we could probably utilize. And, you know, there's, I know we've got neighborhood groups and things like that. I've tried to share my own neighborhood group, the information every time it comes out, but, you know, I know, not, I don't have every neighborhood group in my district. I don't know if some of the newer council members are even familiar with all the neighborhood groups. So, you know, reaching out to those folks as well to get the communication out there. I think that number one has been the biggest frustration because everybody, for every, I feel like for every constituent that calls one of us, there's got to be two dozen more who don't know how to contact us or don't know, you know, they don't know how to use the website or anything like that.
They know to call the mayor's office.
Oh, I'm sure they do. I'm sure they do. But even then, even then, I would say it's only going to be a small percentage of the population that's actually going to be able to pick up the phone even though they have questions or know to pick up the phone if they have questions. So, you know, I would just want us to reach as many people as possible in the future when it comes to communicating things.
Absolutely.
So, go ahead. So, one thing I want to, I want to really hear from you, Mr. Dryden, is an actual plan. So, again, we know we had this issue. We talked about this a few weeks, if not a month or so ago, when we, when you came forward to, for the budget amendment to get the new equipment. We talked about the communication plan. You assured us that that was going to be, you know, kind of buttoned up, and we're still looking to that for that to be buttoned up quite a little bit more. But what I want to hear is, again, we know the issue is here. We're going to have it for at least a few more weeks to a few more months. We have this many employees. We have this equipment that works. What is your, you know, what, how have you altered the schedule moving forward? So, I was lucky enough to be one of the residents that my trash was just picked up a day late.
Yeah.
But as I've driven around Salisbury, I've seen people that their trash is still there a week, if not more. And the concern is, you know, there's wildlife, there are rodents. The further issue that can come from that, what I want to hear from you is to speak to that. And then what is your actual plan so that we can tell people to reassure them just a little bit, you know, that we're doing something beyond saying trust and believe. We need to hear your actual.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, the plan is, we have got multiple teams. That's how we're going to approach this now. Usually, we pick the trash up in four quadrants. So, with all my staff out there, we're going to be able to get more of that taken care of. So, my plan is to get us back on track next week. That's what I want, next week, early, early following week. So, that's our plan of attack with all the staff. I was telling Andy and I told the mayor today, we're going to keep fully staffed all those folks in the sanitation division until we are caught up. Fortunately, timing is on our side for that because our parks department, you know, those folks don't have a lot to do right now, so we can use them fully.
Okay.
So, that's the plan, is to get these quadrants and hit everything so you're not piled up. We want to get, I want to get all this trash collected within a week and a half.
Okay.
So, that's my plan of attack. Long term, we have to have these trucks on a proper replacement schedule. We have three coming right now in March. We, as Andy just said, we have to think long-term about this because of that supply chain, demand. So, that's how we have to look at this in the future in order to stay out of the situation. And I promise, if we think like that, we won't be in this situation again.
Sure.
We just need to prepare ourselves for that.
And I'm glad you said, because that's, that's one thing I want us to do with most of, all of our departments, is look long-term instead of kind of the next year, we need to look three, five, because again, we're growing rapidly as a city. This is going to force like, you know, how we're going to see things moving. If we're growing as a city, we've got to be ready for these things.
Exactly.
And one of the things to add on to that, I think it's important, is knowing that we have the bodies is great. Making sure we have the vehicles and the fleet to actually pick it up is just as crucial. And knowing that more than likely, we are not seeing our last repair before these trucks come in. So, knowing what is our emergency plan, backup for fleet? Is it continuing with Berlin as available? Is it maybe an Askinadelma or Frulender, trying to work some short-term, but also financially knowing what that looks like so that if we have to go to this Plan C because something goes down, we have that right away, kind of in our back pocket.
Sure.
And that's something that we're still working on, exactly what those financial responsibilities are, and working with procurement on the emergency procurement of that and building those relationships.
Not to belabor it longer. One, who is the vendor that we had that we, that we're getting these vehicles from? And are we looking to use them in the future since we've had these, you know, delays and...
Mid-Atlantic is the company and they've been a great vendor to use. They know, we have a great working relationship with our local reps and things like that. So, I think it's a good relationship to continue. Besides that, the closest person we're going to have to go to is across the bridge.
Okay.
So, it's proximity and just the relationship's already there.
Okay.
So, I think continuing that path is just the correct way to go.
Okay.
May I have one thing? I have a suggestion moving forward, and that is, you have worked this out so nicely. WBOC covered it very nicely on the noon news today. I would suggest, piggybacking on what President already said, is that you release now a timeline and someone, their trash is picked up. To really reinforce your credibility that you did come through, is here's the timeline. We are expecting, and I wouldn't say March, I'd say by the beginning of April, we're hoping to have, and list what you're hoping to have come in.
Sure.
And by doing so, then you're opening up your whole, you know, your whole operation as to here's what the citizens can, may expect.
Yeah.
And we apologize. It was, it was out there. Hindsight's 2020. Yes, it should have been out there before now. And since this has been an awareness piece since August, I think someone mentioned earlier, April, I think you mentioned, August was a possibility. So, if you get a timeline in and get it out there, that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, we discussed this on multiple occasions, even in the last calendar year. We've known, going back even to the last, just the very last budget session, this struggle has been with the, knowing that there was three trucks ordered. We wanted to order another one, I believe. Was it a side pickup or something like that?
Yeah, a rear loader.
Okay. So, we had those conversations in April and May, and then we got a bunch of emails about the tax increase. I'm balancing information. And people were like, well, just repair the trucks and wait for what you got and don't increase the taxes. So, then we cut out the truck, the extra truck. So, it's balancing, it's constantly a balancing act in knowing when things are going to come in. The delay with the trucks, and if I'm not mistaken, I, as I recall, even as back in April, talking about initially when the trucks were ordered, no one knew how long that delay was even going to be. I don't even think the company knew how long that delay was going to be. From what I remember hearing and understanding at the time we were going through the budget hearings and sessions was, we had ordered the trucks and as they were putting them together, they were having delay problems getting parts for these trucks. And then we were getting notified saying, oh, it's not going to be the six months, it's going to be punched out. So, I mean, I think anticipating with some planning, I do want to give us some credit. I mean, we, we've been talking about it, balancing between tax increase versus the trucks we had ordered versus the truck that we wanted to order. I also know that on December the 4th, if I'm not mistaken, you came in front of the council and gave us a very detailed plan. Yes, yes, mayor, you were here with it and had laid out multiple steps. If I'm not mistaken, if we go back and look at the tape, which I have, the very things that you have talked about today in planning were also mentioned. So, I do want to give multiple kudos to and acknowledge Field Ops for, there's other people who have taken off, had vacations planned around the holidays, staff had other days taken off. They scrapped those and they came in working very hard to get this. And I think only being a week and a half behind, given the time of year, the holidays, which even my own development was, was, I had trash backed up on my porch for two weeks, you know, and that's with a private company. So, what are you going to do? I do appreciate people being patient, but I also want to recognize and highlight the planning that had gone into and the conversations around repairing versus ordering a new one. And we actually scrapped that truck, a trash truck, because of the budget hearing, correct? Okay, so, we had planned, we had discussed, and keeping people informed. And I just want to point those positives out about the planning of the trucks. Sometimes things are just, you cannot foresee everything coming around the bend. I'm glad to hear about our communication unfolding and putting that up. I think that'll be right. I do think that that city tax, isn't that free? They can sign up for that for free?
That's a good, yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, many people have cellphones, even if it's not a smartphone, if it's, even a flip phone will get the, my dad signed up for them. He doesn't even live in Salisbury, he just signed up for it. And he has a flip phone and it went on his flip phone. So, I'm just saying that those are free and they're very instant and everybody has a cellphone, I believe, or multiple, if people have cellphones. Again, I do want to thank our city employees who have gone above and beyond and trying to really stay ahead of the problem as it unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other kinds of comments? All right, so we do have one public comment from Mr. Joseph Venosa. Come to the podium. And just a reminder, just state your name and full address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yeah, Joseph Venosa, Russell Avenue, Salisbury. Thanks for letting me speak on this. I don't want to belabor the points that you've brought up. And I'm certainly an expert on sanitation, although I'm from Staten Island, New York, which is the largest sanitation landfill in North America. So, go us. But just, just two quick points, and this is something that occurred, you know, the last week and a half. It's a very simple step that we might want to consider. A lot of the neighborhood apps were suggesting people, you know, private citizens who have trucks, pickups who could take stuff to the landfill. That became a backstop for a lot of people during the last few days. It might make sense to just have the city have a shortlist of people who have those private trucks in the event of an emergency like that. And then you post it on the website and saying, you know, here are the numbers of, you know, 10 or 12 local independent, you know, haulers who can take garbage. Because that's happening regardless of if the city does it or not, you may as well want to streamline that process. The other thing, this is a very simple issue. Again, the supply chain issues, we can talk all day about, obviously, that's, you know, something that's beyond our control. But a very simple other side solution, at least temporarily, is maybe provide some additional bins for citizens so that they can store their garbage. Again, supply chain issues aside, we all can go to Target and go to Walmart, buy a few additional bins, have the city distribute them if we know that there are going to be delays. Again, put it on the, you know, or just announce it, say, hey, the city's got 100 plastic bins, citizens are free to take them, and then once they're done and they don't need them, please bring them back, you know, much like we do with the recyclable bins. That's simple, easy stuff. It's not particularly cost-burdensome, pretty easy to do. And just one other point, and again, I don't want to jump on anybody because this has nothing to do with the city employees who are working very hard. The communication issue. The word that kept being used for the last few weeks was, we're having staggered service. The definition of staggered is to arrange something in a particular manner. We didn't have staggered service. We've had delayed service or it's been canceled. That's fine. Just announce it. Again, take the L, right? We're not having service this week. We have an emergency. It's going to be a little bit of a tough time. We all got to buck up and service right now for the foreseeable future is not happening. I think that would actually be better to clarify the communication issue. Just, you know, be honest about it. Sometimes you could say, yeah, we're in a tough situation and we don't know exactly when it'll happen. But saying it's staggered service gives people not only false hope, but a little bit of confusion because we had people in our street who were putting out bins on some days because they had heard a rumor on Nextdoor that it might come, you know, at 10 o'clock on Tuesday or whatever. So, simple solutions, simple fixes, not particularly cost-burdensome, and at least it gives you a bit of a default in the event of these future issues because they are going to happen again. You know, the most basic services that a city government can provide include things like trash disposal. So, when they don't happen, it looks bad, obviously, but you can do a few of these simple fixes that can help us get through it. So, just a few things to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your time and thank you for buttoning it up. We look forward to, you know, not continuing this, this sort of conversation moving forward and looking forward to the better communication. So, and thank you for your time, though. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, this time we'll hear budget amendment to accept funds from Bless Our Children for Santa's workshop by Housing Community Development Director, Mir Boda.
This is so nice.
Santa's Workshop by Housing Community Development Director, Mir Boda. Director Boda?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Same to you.
Hope everybody had a great Christmas and New Year. So this is a, we applied for a grant from the Bless Our Children Draper Foundation, their charitable foundation, which looks like they think a song to do is they raise over $335,000 this year. They were gracious enough to grant $1,000 to us for our Santa workshop, which was what we had on the downtown plaza, turned into, what do we call it this year? Santa's Winter Wonderland, that's what it was. So Santa was out there handing out gifts, we, they gave us, we had a 100 and some, 430 gifts were given to children.
Wow.
Probably about 375 books. Riverland Dairy donated milk, and we, we bought some cookies, and it was, it was a great event, and looking forward to do it again next year. So what this money does, it goes into a revolving grant account, and we basically use this so that Santa and his elves can continue making gifts for next year, and we use some money to enhance the event. We had someone, a blow-up gingerbread man was running around, and the individual felt like he had ran a marathon. But, so it was good, it was a good event, very positive event, and so we're just asking to be able to accept this and drop that in the account for next year.
Absolutely. This is wonderful. And it was.
Yes.
The Winter Wonderland was phenomenal. It was fantastic.
It was. Any discussion from, from council? Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Okay. All right, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
We look forward to it. All right, this time we'll have a MS4 presentation by Infrastructure and Development Director, Rick Baldwin. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Council. Happy New Year to all of you.
Same to you.
This is a briefing, I believe you had slides, I don't know if we'll have the PowerPoint this evening or not. But I'll just proceed if that's all right.
That's fine, thank you.
So, we did start out with MS4, and the note below that, that this is not a street gang.
Thank you for clarifying.
But this is a very important issue to the city of Salisbury. The MS4 municipal separate storm sewer system, on the slide with some background.
Could you push the mic a little? There you go, thank you.
Certainly. So MS4, municipal separate storm water system. On the slide, there was background information that let you know that this began, it's based in the Federal Clean Water Act. The authority to regulate storm drains was delegated to the state of Maryland in 1999, and our current permit as issued is a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Small Municipal Separate Storm System, MS4, under the General Permit Number 13IM5500. Just to give you a basis that compliance is not an option for this permit or for the city of Salisbury. Under the MS4 requirements, which is a much shorter name, one of the primary objectives that we have to achieve is a 20% reduction of our impervious surface throughout the entire city. That impervious surface includes city streets, sidewalks, private residences, commercial, industrial property, anything that you can think of that's not going to allow storm water to pass through it, including a gravel driveway. So, what the slide did show you was a good idea of how much impervious surface that we do have from the GIS system. That has been originally measured as baseline and annually remeasured to see how we're proceeding towards the reduction. Every year in October, we have to report to the state on our progress for the program, detailing our impervious surface reduction. We also account for all of our storm water inspections, which helps to maintain the progress that has been achieved in the years ahead. And then thing called minimum control measures, which we'll talk about, well, I guess I'll talk about it next, it's not on another slide. Minimum control measures, the easiest way to understand that is basically is outreach. We have to cover personal education, public and personal involvement and participation in projects and learning that are associated with storm water, storm water improvement, or the health of the Chesapeake Bay. We have to look for illicit discharge, detect them and eliminate them. In the early years, we were periodically finding a few, but we do maintain an ongoing program for detection of any illicit discharges. And strangely enough, an illicit discharge can merely be a vehicle pulling out or pulling away, discharging onto the street, something that should not be spilling out of that vehicle. We have periodically had to run some of those folks down. We also have to look at construction site storm water runoff control, post-construction storm water management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping, which sounds rather simple, but the city does have two significant industrial sites between the wastewater treatment plant and Field Ops, so maintaining that good housekeeping practices is also a significant effort. So where do we stand today? So far, in the five years that we've been at this, we've completed 173 projects to date. But don't get too excited, I'm going to bring you to some of the bad news in a bit. That 173 projects accounts for 330 of the 440 acres that have to be dealt with by 2025. But again, this is the part that's not the good news. Of the 330 acres to date, Mr. Dryden and his crew have accomplished 300 acres through inlet cleaning and street sweeping. So that's more equipment, more labor, more people that must continue on an annual basis in order to maintain that number for us, rather significant, as you can tell from tonight's earlier discussion. So in five years, the 171 projects that we have completed accounts for only 30 acres, and we have 110 acres to go by 2025. So, oh, and I'd also like to point out that when we reach 2025, we will not be done when we get there. We are expecting a new permit to be issued in the very near term, which will cover 2026 to 2030, and we've been told to expect an additional 10% reduction in our original baseline, or another 220 acres. So there's a lot of work ahead. In the report that goes to the state every October is a work plan that discusses what's coming up. How are we going to succeed? How are we going to achieve our end result? So we do have a variety of key projects in the pipeline, which Dylan Onich has joined me tonight, but, well, before I turn it over to him, to cover just a little bit of other background. Existing commercial properties within the city, as they are redeveloped, rather than having a business build their improvements on a greenfield, if they go in and they redevelop an existing commercial industrial site, that typically results in some positive credit for us towards the MS4 permit. It's not a great deal, sometimes it's as little as a tenth of an acre, but in order to achieve this goal, we have tracked projects down to 1/100 of an acre to, well, if we told you what it sometimes costs per acre, you'll be glad that we're tracking it for every last penny. So I've already said 2024 to 2025 is going to be a very heavy lift for the city. Dylan, who's joining me tonight, has been assigned the MS4 reporting and tracking. He's also engaged in creating a work plan for 2024 and laying out the initial plan for 2026 to 2030. Recently Dylan also took on communication and coordination and completion of a retrofit. He'll talk about those a little bit more in a moment, on private property, a design that was in the works for a couple of years, and none of these things happen overnight, but it is one of the, one of the ways that we move to go forward. Very pleased with Dylan joining our team and allowing him to take over, discuss some of the upcoming activities to get us to 2025.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Good evening, Council. Happy to be here today, I hope you're having a good holiday. So as Mr. Baldwin laid out, we have a few projects in the pipeline, so I'd like to just talk to you a bit more about what exactly it is we're planning on doing. So, one method we are looking at to increase our acreage credit through MS4 is something that we coined, actually, it's called street terracaping. And so this basically looks at which roadbeds in the city have excess pavement that we can actually take up, convert back to green space, and actually install some trees. So we anticipate to get at least 10 acres of credit from this, and we went through our GIS team, found these streets applicable, a good example would be Delaware Avenue. Then we kind of cross-referenced that with our tree canopy study, we looked at which areas are lowest in tree canopy and most need of reducing their heat island effect. We also considered if these communities are low income, and also what are sort of maintenance schedule ways for improving these streets, so we want to do this in the most cost-effective way that we possibly can. It could yield us up to 20 acres of credit, it just depends on sort of the timeline that we can actually get done by 2025 for that street terracaping. Our next strategy would be conservation, so if we have city-owned parcels that are in a current natural state but are under development pressures, we can conserve them under an easement, and under that easement, we can actually get credit for that. So a key candidate parcel would be the portion of Naylor Mill Forest, which is currently not under an easement. If we were to conserve that parcel, we may receive roughly 17 acres of credit. If you're not familiar with exactly where that is, it's just northeast of the sports facilities and north side of town, and it's currently being partially used for a shooting range from police department. Another strategy that we have is conservation landscaping. So this is a practice that takes a disturbed area and converts it over to an open meadow, reforest it, or converts it to a riparian forest. A key parcel we're looking at acquiring and conserving, or rather doing landscaping on, would be 500 Riverside. So if we were to take this waterfront property, we could actually plant trees on it, and we would get a riparian forest buffer credit for that. Furthermore, because this is a shoreline property, another strategy that that property would pertain to us would be shoreline restoration. So we could actually receive a factor of the linear feet of shoreline, restore that, and we would get, I believe, was roughly 80 acres of credit. But that will probably be in our 2030 permit. But we would get some credit by 2025, potentially if we were to do riparian forest planting on 500 Riverside. Further, you all have been discussing the water and sewer extension policy. This would be a big boost for our MS4 program. For every septic that's converted and rather changed over to our sewer system, we get 0.39 acres of credit. We are anticipating 20 conversions, however, if you were to see, oh, I see we got it back up, wonderful. If you could go, I believe, three slides over, would that be possible? One more? There we are. Are you familiar with this map? But the areas in red are surrounded by the city, and so it would essentially be free for the city to convert those septics over to our sewer system. So that area is quite abundant, so if a state of emergency were declared, we can anticipate more than 20, so we're being conservative with our plan, but it could yield us quite a significant amount of credit. Further, as Mr. Baldwin was alluding to, we are working on BMP retrofits, BMP being best management practice. This is a storm watch facility that not only treats the quantity, but also the quality of water that goes through that system. So recently at 1111, Mount Herman Road, we reverted their old storm water system, which, like I said, only treated the quantity of storm water, and now it also treats the quality. So if we were to go forward and do more storm water retrofits like that, it would make a significant difference in our permit. Not only that, there's also education aspects towards BMP retrofits. I think it's fantastic if we could bring local schools and show their students, you know, this is an improvement that we've made towards restoring our bay, helps out all different sort of aspects, and it's beautiful, it really is. So those are our key strategies that we have in the pipeline. If you have any questions, I will refer back to Richard Baldwin.
Questions or discussion from council? Councilwoman issue?
Yes. First of all, on your street terracaping, I love the photo. It's warm and fuzzy and it's green. My concern is with all the streetscaping, what cost is involved in that? Setting it up is one cost, another cost becomes labor for the city and the maintenance. If you look at Fitzwater Street right now and you look at Isabella, all those little jutouts that, in my opinion, are definitely in the way, also have not necessarily been maintained. And I worry about the cost that the city will incur to maintain these lovely setups when initially they look perfect and, you know, address what you're trying to address so well. That's just a concern.
So we appreciate the concern, and under direction of the Administrator and Mayor, each of these projects, when they're early in the planning stage, will include Field Ops, so that we can address maintenance and taking a look at that. Should any of these projects go forward, or before any segment, any block, any street, any portion of this, of what Dylan has termed terracaping, before it will go forward, it will be back in front of council in the planning stage with that information of things such as what is planned, where are we on maintenance, how will this be sustained. As, as a counterpoint to cost, this would be far more cost-effective than many of the other things that we can do. We are finding, if we are not able to pick the low-hanging fruit, that you're looking at well over $100,000 per acre to deal with impervious surface, as we look at average numbers from our, from this jurisdiction, as well as the other jurisdictions around the state of Maryland and the state of Virginia. So we diligently want to try and find ways to accomplish this without having to come in for a large capital improvement request. In the next year, in 2024, looking at sort of the west side of the city, which has an added advantage of, that's where we are going to be focusing in 2024 for repaving, so we'll be taking advantage of looking at mobilizing equipment and doing the work while we're going to be on those streets doing the work anyway. So those are all excellent points, that as we bring each project forward, we hope that we are able to tick off as we go down, because we are desperate to find more acreage than we've been able to achieve in the last four years.
I appreciate all your work, because I realize this is, you know, the state requires this, so it's not a case where you're just deciding, I'm going to go out and do this. And your creativity is to be commended, but I was just curious what, how we're going to have to pay for some of this.
Yes.
I had a question. So a while back, we instituted the meadow program with just residents, and I'm wondering if we could possibly create, use a way of getting credits via those? If people have actually set up those meadows, can we follow up with those and maybe use those for getting credit? I've been trying to get one set up in my yard. It's, it's a work in progress, it's a work in progress, but I applied to be a part of that, and, and it's, it's been a great, if frustrating at times, project in my backyard. Tell my dogs to leave it alone. That'd be great, I'd love that. But, I mean, if people are attempting that, and you can verify that some, in some way by providing an inspection or something like that, and measuring the spaces that they've used, you know, maybe we can get some credits that way. I don't know if that would be qualified because it's on private property, but...
We, we could certainly take the criteria of what's necessary to qualify as a conservation area, because the state is quite prescriptive about what will qualify.
Right.
But, you know, certainly we could begin by going to the green team. Previously, there was the Environmental Task Force.
Right.
You know, any outlet that, where we can leverage what we're trying to get done by going to additional resources, we're more than happy to spend part of our time with them.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so.
Councilwoman Jackson? Actually, hold on one, hold on one moment. We can't hear you, just one moment, Ms...
Wait a minute.
There we are, yep.
I heard you say the west side of Salisbury. What areas are you anticipating on doing this work?
In the, in the package that you had, and in the PowerPoint, on the, on the slide that's called... that's called "Street Terracing," there is a map in the left-hand side that is highlighting the streets that have the criteria that Dylan was outlining, where we've looked at the width of the roadbed, we've looked at the, well, you can describe it. You're the one that set that up.
Right. So we found the difference between the width of the roadbed and the amount of pavement that's necessary for a proper flow of traffic. So that excess pavement can be ripped up. And then we also cross-referenced it with the tree canopy. So where there is low tree canopy, we want to rip it up first and then plant those trees so we can reduce the urban heat island effect equitably throughout the city. We also considered income in the area, so lower income, higher priority, because a higher urban heat island affects lower-income communities disproportionately. And then we also considered the maintenance schedule for ensuring that our streets are usable. So if we're going to be going through, we might as well be doing this concurrently.
So let me answer a question. Did you hand out, are you using the PowerPoint? Because I'm not there, I can't see it. But my question still hasn't been answered. What areas of the west side are you deciding on doing or if you are, because I already said the west side. So I wanted to know what areas were you going to...
Councilwoman Jackson, it's in page 11 of the, of the work session.
I can't find it on my phone.
Okay.
Because I'm on my phone. I'm on my...
Okay.
Oh, she's using her laptop.
I only have...
I'm using my laptop for the, I'm zooming, so I can't hear you.
I was going to ask if you could send out a more, a clearer map.
That's what I was going to, going to suggest is outside...
I can't see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's small on the PowerPoint. So outside this meeting, we'll send the inventory that we're anticipating. And it's only anticipation. As I said, each of these need to come back before council because they are changed to the street.
Okay.
And to Councilwoman DeShue, one of the things that you had asked about was bump outs. It's not our intention to include any bump outs in this effort. This is strictly towards reduction of unnecessary impervious surface and hopefully plantings, whether that's grass, lowest maintenance, or trees where we get more credit.
Thank you.
Well, I'm still not getting the answer that I'm asking for, even though I can't pull it up. And I'm asking a question, which areas, and you're saying it's on the PowerPoint, is my, my thing. But what, I mean...
I think I see here, I think this might answer it. There's a suggestion for Delaware Avenue. They're, they're making a suggestion as a high priority area for low, it's a low tree canopy, there's not a lot of trees in that area, disadvantaged community, and they're looking at the size of the sidewalks in that area and able to improve them with the maybe tree plantings, extra grass, extra green space. It looks like Delaware Avenue area, according to the map and what is written out as an example, that's what they're talk, I think that's what...
Yeah.
I think Cypress Street as well, maybe. I don't know if that intersected with...
Cypress Street?
Yes. It looks like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cypress Street.
And my version is so small, I can't see it either.
Yes.
It doesn't even have, we can't even read the street names on it, so.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think Dylan's going to send us a better...
I think, I think that's what you were, I think that's what you were asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. But I think Dylan's going to send us a better copy so we have a, yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Mr. Mayor, I believe you had a question or comment?
Yeah. You were using this, this conversion rate of .39 acres for every septic conversion. I mean, that, that turns it into a revenue stream potentially. People are hooking up to the system versus an expense for us.
Yes. It does, it does as well.
Any, any idea, I mean, we're looking at this bigger map in terms of folks getting tapped in. Any idea what that could look like from the standpoint of, is it a few hundred people that we could tap into?
Well, one of, one of the very important things that Dylan pointed out is like those donut holes or infill areas.
Yeah, right.
The only way we proceed is when the Comico County Health Department declares a health emergency. But we're also quite aware that within some of these communities immediately adjacent to the city, they're already experiencing family septic systems.
Exactly, yeah.
So, you know, really thankful that the, you know, that Amanda Pollack and the council did proceed forward with that policy. It's tremendous. And would also speculate, and I want to be clear on speculating, that as PFAS continues forward, these houses that are on septic systems are also on wells. So this could drive this forward rather dramatically. Better for us, better for the Chesapeake, better for the Comico River. And when it's under those health emergencies and PFAS, Mayor, it's not likely to be a capital project for the city.
Right.
But it would be a revenue at the back.
So, so last question on this subject. From the 25 to 30, 2030 projection of 226, 226 acres that they want to convert, at $100,000 an acre in this bio-retention slash, that's $22 million. I mean, that's, I mean, so we've got to look at numbers that, again, make it revenue-neutral to, you know, lower impact unless we can get state funding to do some of this stuff. Am I wrong?
No. It, it, it's a, it's a frightening figure.
Very much so.
It is an unfunded mandate, starting with federal regulation and reaching down to our community as well as pretty much every community in the state now. The smallest communities will also be covered next. So it is a challenge. That's why creative thinking like the street terracing is a good idea.
Yeah.
We do work with property owners, you know, so that taking, as Dylan was saying, taking a BMP retrofit, property that has quantity management on it and adding to it so that we're dealing with the nutrients is more cost-effective. We've identified a couple of properties that we think that strictly through documentation, just by mapping the drainage area, showing how it's functioning, maybe doing some soil bores in the facilities that they have, that we can pick up credit, you know, at the thousands or tens of thousands versus the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And just, Rick, you also mentioned about there may be opportunities within working with commercial partners like we did with Blind Industries, that if there is a reuse of the space or redevelopment opportunity, the amount of parking that is on-site may not be as required of the impervious, so you may have an opportunity to remove or explore different opportunities as the mall goes through a phase, as some of these other bigger properties go through a, an evolution in their use, there may be opportunities to work with those owners of those properties to remove some impervious solution, services.
Absolutely. And a couple of years ago, the council did approve changing the city ordinance for minimum parking standards. So that creates an opportunity for the types of things that Andy's describing. Blind Industries was a great project again. Field Ops was involved. Chesapeake Bay, I can't even name all of the partners that were involved there. And they have more pavement that we would be happy to take out for them, but as soon as they're ready.
Good. Listening to other, and we have no public comments for this. We appreciate you all for, we have a public comment? Yes. If you don't mind just stating your name and your address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Anthony Sarbain. I live 1108 Gambi's Run, Salisbury. First, I want to thank you for running for office. Appreciate your time and service. There are two things I want to talk about, and since it's infrastructure, here it is. I didn't write a letter this time, but I'm the letter writer for Shoemaker Pond because Shoemaker Pond is a city and county responsibility. And if we don't do something with it, I want to remind you of a place on your way to Cambridge. When you go through Vienna, look on the right-hand side. That's going to be Shoemaker Pond in 30 years. I'll be dead and gone, but that Shoemaker Pond is a lovely place. There are 26 houses that are in the city of Salisbury. And I really think, I've been writing letters, writing letters. I thought this time I'd show up in person. I don't need to write another letter, but I really hope the city and county will get together. It was done at one time. It was done at one time and take care of that. Anything you can do to correct it, the hydrilla and the lily pads in there in the summer are unbelievable. If you come out now, you won't see it. They're gone. But come, come out around April, May, and we'll have a good time. And since I'm standing, if I can make one other comment, this is a, you know, I was in public service, I was in public life, I was president of the county council for four years. We don't know what you're doing. People can say, go on the website, you know, there are a lot of people, when you say website, they leave the room. They honestly leave, leave the room. I, I've seen that with veterans, a lot of veteran, older veterans, the minute you say website, you might as well smack them in the face and send them home. The Daily Times is doing nothing. Forget it. There's nothing in that paper. When I, and I get it every day. Why do I get it? I read the obituaries. At my age, you want to see who died, so you might want to pay your respects. Write them a sympathy card. Nothing. The Independent tries. It's a weekly. And I think a lot of things have been going on and people, people will chatter and say, do you know what's going on with this street, that street? They don't know. And the worst thing to have is an uninformed public. An uninformed public is going to jump up and bite you right in the, I won't tell you what part of the body they're going to bite you in, but they need to know what's going on. Public information is critical. It has nothing to do with infrastructure, by the way, so you'll have to pardon me. But since I'm standing, but I beg you, I honestly do beg you, whether you, I have an idea, and you might say it's stupid. When I was in office, we had a public information officer. That position's gone. It was a county position. It's gone. Why doesn't the city and the county go together, hire a person who would do public information for both bodies? That means getting the information out so the general public knows exactly what you're doing. They don't have to watch the computer to see it. It's written. But in my travels in the community, and I'm still very, very active in the community, the one thing I hear from a lot of folks is, we don't know what they're doing. And, you know, that applies to the county as well as the city. I wish you the very best. Thank you for listening to me. And if I don't get home before dark, my wife will wonder where I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Chris, may I make one comment to Mr. Sarbain? I just want you to know that I have reached out to Salisbury University's Biology Department, and they are going to be meeting with me here now that their semester has ended sometime, I think, within the next two weeks regarding possibility of doing a research project on the Shoemaker Pond. One of the concerns that I've heard from the county is that the, putting money into it and not knowing exactly, we could shock it with chemicals and get it clean, but that's temporary. Wanting to know, looking at what, what the, what's polluting it, what parts are, you know, what parts in the city, what parts in the county are polluting it. And they're going to have to test the water over the season, so it'll be a whole year of research project, and then come back with recommendations. It's, now, I don't know what I don't know, Mr. Kitzro, but I do, I do know this. We did, the city did commit in their capital improvement plan about two years ago, I think it was like $25,000, to resolve some issues with the Shoemaker Pond. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can continue to keep that to work on either putting it towards parts of the research or, or parts of the recommendations going forward.
Well, whether the fashion, the product, and the local city parks, well, where the city has plans.
Yes.
And, you know, my wife and I go down and there they are. And that's what people focus on. The endurance is a body of water.
Yes.
So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
No, but I, I just want you, yeah.
I'll leave it in my lap, got flush.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's why you're making a big...
We're getting some, we're getting some track, we're getting some traction on that, which I'm, I'm glad about. We are getting some traction on it.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, of course, thank you. Seeing no other comments or discussion, we appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work. We appreciate it. Do we have transportation manager Will White here?
We're going to actually take that off the agenda.
Okay.
We're going to table that.
Okay.
We didn't get all the information we needed in advance of this conversation, so I think it's going to be tabled based off of what I heard from Brian early at 4:15. Unless, unless you have new information, John, I think, I got a message from Brian that it was tabled.
No, I have no new information. We had people...
Mr. Sarbain?
All around here.
Can you?
They were notified last year. I still want to speak up.
Okay. We can, yeah, if we would like to still have that agenda, since it's on the agenda, we can do that, but we won't have a formal recommendation, but as a discussion topic.
We'll still hear the public comment and then we'll just, okay.
Yep.
Thank you all. We have Patty Stevens?
If we're going to kind of have a higher level conversation on this, please come up here. Everyone's got in their packet a little bit of the information. What we're talking about is a multi-use pathway along Armstrong Parkway, which is adjacent to Coca-Cola plant up there by Nellie Mill. So you should all have the information in the packet of what we will be talking about. So the individuals who are speaking on there are talking about that specifically. Will would be able to brief you future, at a future time, with more of the details with the maps of it, but love to open it up for people's comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Patty Stevens. I actually live in Worcester County, but I'm the governor's appointee to the Maryland Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I was appointed by Governor Hogan. And I was appointed by Governor Moore to the Transportation Revenue and Infrastructure Needs Commission. And I have worked with a number of city staff and also community advocates, many of whom are here tonight, on active transportation planning. And in fact, when I speak to cities and counties around the eastern shore, I hold Salisbury up as an example of exemplary, inclusive community planning, of forward-thinking about active transportation that has equity impacts, economic impacts, and environmental impacts, as well as health impacts. And this project was one that we commented on and participated in the planning of some time ago at a, at a community meeting that was held for the Move SBY planning. And this project of the Armstrong Parkway Trail was approved. My understanding was, we actually were excited because I think the contractor was on-site in June and was scheduled to begin work and the action, I'm, I'm not sure why, I'm not privy to city, you know, actions, but that it was pulled. And there, there is so much opportunity from an equity perspective. What we know is vulnerable road users, those that walk and bike, including people who could access jobs in the many businesses and industries along that area, are the most vulnerable and have the highest incidence of serious injury and, and death rate when, particularly when they travel on routes where there's truck traffic, as there is in that area. So the, the plan for a shared-use pathway paralleling and separate from the traffic on that route was very, very forward-thinking, very much in line with best practices, with safe streets for all, with the priorities that the Maryland Department of Transportation has put forward in its current state plan and that previous city administration and council has approved. So I urge you to consider this. I know that, I'm not sure why it was pulled tonight, but I left my house at 3:15 to get here, so I didn't know until I got here. There are other people that are here also that I hope you'll also hear, and if need be, will come to a future work session because this is a really important project and it will impact people who are in a disadvantaged part of the county, of the city that will benefit, many of whom, including some of the folks that are here tonight, who get around to their jobs and their daily needs by bike or foot, not because it's fun and, you know, we go to the Signal Century, which is a great event, but because that's how they transport themselves. And so I urge you to consider this project and move it forward. It's already been funded by a grant. The state is not really great about when you give money back or you don't use the money they give you and they're, you know, then the next time you apply for money, they're not so, you know, crazy about giving it back to you when you didn't use what they gave you. So I urge you to consider this project and moving it forward since it was already approved and has been funded. And I thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes. We have Owen Bailey? Yes, uh, we have Owen Bailey?
Good evening, council. Uh, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Owen Bailey. I'm the Director of Land Use and Policy for the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy. Uh, our office is at 114 South Washington Street in Easton. Uh, I made the drive all the way from Kent County, about an hour and a half away, so I'm, I feel excited. I still get the opportunity to speak. Uh, our organization has been leading an effort to create a regional trail network across the eastern shore, looking at how few trails there are on the eastern shore compared to the rest of the state of Maryland. Um, we have, uh, held Salisbury as one of our champions for trail, um, development and maintenance, the connections that it creates for communities and neighborhoods, connecting people to job centers, parks, schools, uh, the active transportation that provides, the healthier lifestyles. Uh, the research that we have seen shows that development of trails pays dividends in the future. It is one of the best returns on investments any community can make. Uh, and this project, um, that was before the commission, or was before, uh, the council here tonight, um, is a great project. We, uh, highly encourage, um, the consideration for it. Trails not only provide a financial and sustainable benefit to a community, but a huge equitable benefit as well for people who can't afford to own and operate a vehicle, for people who can't physically operate a vehicle. It gives them the opportunities and the freedoms that the rest of us get to enjoy. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Trilligan?
Good evening, council. Um, on behalf of the Green Team, we wanted to voice our support for this project, the continuation of it. It's really important for a number of reasons, which other people have more eloquently described, but I just wanted to be here to voice our support on behalf of this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Aurelio Sinidi? Or, please correct me.
Aurelio Tinni.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, circle writing.
Good evening. Thank you, council, for providing me just this brief opportunity to express my support for this project as well. Um, I'm not going to talk about this specific project, but kind of largely about the bicycle infrastructure, which I am, uh, extremely supportive of. Uh, I am a bicycle commuter. I rely on the Riverside Bike Lane every single day to get to my job right across the street at Wycomico Public Library. Uh, but there's also tons of this city that I am unwilling to ride my bike on because it is not fully protected. And so I think that projects like this, that are especially providing separated bike lanes and safe routes away from traffic, are a benefit to everyone. It's going to provide more active transportation, healthier lifestyles, and a more sustainable future. And when I talk to people about bike commuting, because I am an advocate of this, and I rely on this, and, and I, I'm passionate about it, and I love coming to work by bike, I talk to my coworkers about why they don't do that, or I talk to other people downtown about why they don't do that. The number one thing that every single person says to me is, they don't feel safe enough. And that's because while we are building this infrastructure, and people like me maybe do feel safe, there are a lot of people who do not. And so I'm hoping that you will continue to support projects like this so that more and more people will take this option going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alex McFay? McRae, thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Alex McRae. I'm a, uh, member of the Eastern Shore Running Club, uh, Eastern Shore International Mountain Bicycling Association, uh, Ocean Bello Club. We put on a bike race here in Salisbury. And, uh, just, and just generally, and I'm also a member of the B-PAC. And I'm here to voice support for, um, this project as well as other bicycling and pedestrian, uh, infrastructure improvements that are necessary to, uh, provide better access to businesses and better accesses for recreation. Uh, one thing that comes up often with these infrastructure improvements is that, uh, is that they're confusing, or that they are, um, that they will slow down transit, uh, motorized transportation, and that is true, and that is the point. They're designed to make it safer for everyone to get where they need to go. And having the, these things will provide, uh, having these infrastructure improvements will provide more access to, uh, Mailer has 11 miles of trails that people can use. It has an adaptive, uh, playground that, that are available for the community. Uh, having this access can make it this more of an active destination for people to, um, to come to Salisbury. And the business owners in Salisbury will appreciate that, both from, uh, uh, people getting to work and also people coming to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And finally, Edwin Lendercamp?
I haven't prepared too much, uh, for this, but basically, I'm a committee member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Uh, I, uh, I'm not from here. I've been here for about three years. Uh, I'm from Germany, California originally. Uh, I, yeah, I mean, the connectivity, I think, is a huge issue in Salisbury. Uh, when you see Route 50, Route 13, the two highways cutting through the city, uh, you just feel that, that the city's very much built for cars. And I myself, I'm a, I'm a consumer of a two. I drive way too much in the city, honestly. Uh, I, I, I think it's really important for other people to have more opportunities to bike, like the others have said so far. Um, I've really just got a, I've really just got a, a quote, uh, from, um, the founder of the Project for Public Spaces from New York, uh, who is also the head of the placemaking movement. Uh, former mayor Jake Day was a, I know he was a pretty big enthusiast of placemaking as well. And the quote is, "If you plan, uh, cities for cars and traffic, you get cars and traffic. If you plan cities for, uh, people and places, you get people and places."
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all's time, and, and, and I know some of you all trekt, trekt. And then some of you all, uh, came, you know, uh, great lengths to come here. So we appreciate you all, and, and hope when we do have our transportation manager, Mr. White, back, you all will visit us again. And, uh, if you wouldn't mind emailing, uh, councils what your thoughts, we would appreciate that. And it is something that's on my 2024, uh, list, is to start biking. So, um, if you all want to tell me how to, how, uh, start that, that would be great. Any other comments or, or discussion?
Just apologize for the last minute, uh,
Yes.
change. We, um, one of the crucial pieces of this is understanding that it will impact some of the businesses along Armstrong. We wanted to make sure that we either had representation here from them, or, um, you know, a letter of support for this project.
Okay.
Coca-Cola being the, the, the primary, um, industry that would be impacted by this. We wanted to make sure that we knew exactly where they stood in this, before we made a formal recommendation. But, um, but yes, it falls in line with a lot of our other
Yes.
things that came before.
Can I ask, because this, this was pulled before, can I ask you, um, was this one of the projects that we put on hold?
Yes.
Back when we were just, we realized that the infrastructure department was just overwhelmed with projects, or?
Yeah, it was mentioned earlier that this project was in the queue to start getting moving forward in the summertime, and this was put on
Yeah.
hold, um, take a breath, reevaluate it, present it to you. One of the things that we, um, established then was, before we did any infrastructure, specifically within bike infrastructure, um, changes to lanes, we wanted to present some of that information to you all, to help everybody understand what is happening, to make sure we still had the blessing, or if we want to make modifications in real time. So people weren't exploring this and seeing it happen. So, um, you see a lot more projects that might have already come before this group, have been funded previously. We'll be coming back for a refresher to get, you know, a new take on it, make sure people are still on board if it's still the direction we want to go, so.
Okay. Thank you. This time, we'll hear about Employee Childcare Service Discussion with City Administrator and Councilwoman Michelle Gregory.
I'll just come up front, because it's a little bit easier, and this microphone's on. Um, so I'm going to let Michelle and I, uh, jump into this, but, uh, Michelle, cut me off whenever you want to. One of the things that we have been talking about for several years, um, more behind closed doors, and there's been an opportunity recently to kind of explore it more, is this idea of essentially employee childcare services. Um, and I wanted to get a litmus, uh, you know, a temperature check from this group to see if this is something we want to further explore. So what does that look like? We have noticed, even at a, a recent event, that recruitment and retention efforts within organizations, one of the topics is around childcare. And should that employer provide childcare, or provide some sort of subsidized opportunity within that? Um, younger families, or, or people who are, um, wanting to start families or have families and are having a difficulty affording childcare and, and employment, are having to make a decision. That's kind of how this started pre-COVID. So, um, as we are on the eve of budget discussions, one of the options, um, that I wanted to bring forward to this group is if there's any interest in us exploring further, this as being a, a service, a benefit that we have for our employees, there would be costs associated with it, of course, um, some of, to, to make it affordable, um, whether it's sliding scale or just a discounted rate, um, the city will be picking up some of those costs, whether that is employees, overhead of a facility, um, just some infrastructure that has to go into it. Um, and if it's not running our own facility or a program, is it partnering with somebody or providing some sort of stipend, um, to help employees who are needing this service? Really looking at that anywhere from birth to five age group, pre, preschool, um, pre elementary school age. Michelle?
Yeah. So, a little bit of background. You know, in childcare, prior to COVID, we were already in a crisis mode, um, as far as childcare in this country, finding enough childcare, finding quality childcare. It has been, it has been, um, it was dire to begin with. And then when COVID hit, over, over half of the childcare facilities out, out there closed. Um, many either went out of business because people were out, out of work, and they didn't need childcare, couldn't afford childcare, or they just chose voluntarily to shut down because it became incredibly costly to operate during COVID. So, one of the things that we wanted to, you know, address was, there is a huge shortage of childcare, and when employees can't find childcare, they either won't show up to work, or they won't even take a job. Because it just, it, the, the costs outweigh the benefits for them. And being able to offer this to employees, I think, will be a huge boon to us. I think that this is something that, in my discussions with, with just folks in general, I'm not, I'm no longer in the business itself, but in talking with, with friends who still are, it is, the waitlists are long. The waitlists are incredibly long. People can, just can straight up not find childcare, and when they do, it is subpar. Um, we have an opportunity here to do something for our employees that makes us a, a, an employer that people want to come to. We can't always offer the best salaries. Um, we've talked about this before. We, we do our best with, with our budget, but, you know, offering an incentive like childcare might be another way we can do that. And keep, uh, attract and retain the employees. I think that if we were to do this, the model that we should look at is having a facility of our own, because number one, it gives us the ability to do a little bit more for the parents and the employees, having something close. I used to personally have clients that would literally drive to my, to my childcare from Laurel and then go to Talbot for their work. Um, so that tells you how far people are going. Um, having something local, having something close to the employee's place of work would be huge. Um, I don't know if, I, I don't know if we want to look at doing infants and toddlers. The, the staffing ratios on those are, are much, much higher. And now, they're not necessarily cost-effective, but, but for two and ups, I think it's something that's completely feasible for us. Um, and I think that that's something that we could really seriously consider doing. Um, and like Andy said, you know, he and I have been discussing this for, for many years. I think since I joined the council, we started having these discussions. And, um, you know, if we can do a sliding scale that, that makes it affordable for the employees while also becoming a, a way of retaining folks, and this, you know, so they know that they have care available to them. I think that would be a good thing for us to do.
Councilwoman Michelle?
One suggestion, I know that when Title Health, which was then PRMC, um, this came up, and it's been years and years ago. I can't even remember the questionnaire I created for them. But, um, they were doing the same thing that you've talked about, doing, supplying it for their, you know, the people on board. What we did do, um, Goddard Space up in Greens, uh, outside University of Maryland. I went up to visit them because they offer the same thing to their employees. And again, it's been years ago, so it's not a source, a current source. But I would suggest that you do two things. Number one, come up with a questionnaire for your city employees as far as ability to, you know, their interest and/or what they would expect from this. And then, um, definitely go visit Title Health now, because theirs is still, as far as I know, in operation. And as Michelle said, your infants are really a tough hole to fill. But, um, with those two startups, that would give you some direction as far as, uh, who you need to hire, credentials, because you'd have to follow the state guidelines for preschool and/or daycare requirements, licensing, that kind of thing. But I think I'd start there with a survey for all of your employees, and with, you know, things so easily done online now, you know, Monkey, whatever you want to use, that's probably antiquated too. But, um, and have them fill it out, and you'll get a real feel for what you do want to supply.
Any, any sense of what the demand might look like?
They put it in place.
No, I meant, for the city, I mean.
I have, oh, I have.
Andy's got 12 kids.
Right, right.
We did have a survey that indicated.
Yeah. We did, we did a survey not long, uh, or a few years ago.
There is a demand, but, um, you know, by the time we stood this up, those kids may be.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem.
I'm holding back.
They're graduating college now, actually, Andy, I'm sorry.
But, um, we do find that, based off of our paternity leave use, we have a lot of people in that space.
Yeah.
Um, so, what we do know, come the, some, couple of the facts that we know, um, the costs associated. If there was something that was competitive and open and available for our, for our staff, I think there would be a, definitely a demand, because we know we have the young parents. Um, if there was a proximity to work and, and better scheduling, I think we would, if we created something that, it, we do have the young parents who are looking for it or have it right now. Um, when we first started talking about it, we were losing people who were just, once they were leaving, they weren't returning, because the cost effectiveness was not there. So they were working for free, essentially. So, I think looking at all of those pieces, um, sharing you in, I know I, I ran childcare for the first six years of my professional life, it is, it is exciting.
That's how, that's how, that's how we kind of, that's how we kind of bonded over this.
But, but I think, understanding that, um, if we were to stand something up like this, there is a cost that would be encumbered by the employer to do this, if we are looking at creating something that has a, uh, a more cost-effective model for, for our employees. So before we spend a whole bunch of time there, I want to make sure, um, I think we will find the demand. We'll still do a questionnaire, but if there's even an interest beyond, Michelle and I, for us to explore this further, thinking that this may be something that comes up during a budget discussion for further consideration, then it's worth, worth the dis, the discussion, whether it gets funded or doesn't. I just want to know if there's interest.
Yeah. You have to factor in retention too, because if you train employees, you bring them on board, they relocate, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, if this is a cost to the city, then it becomes beneficial to the city, even though it becomes a cost. If that makes sense.
Right. So, that's, I think, I think the, I think the cost is, is, is far outweighed by the possible gains we could possibly have.
Absolutely. And I'm, and this is someone who's worked in childcare for, you know, for a while as well, and so, um, and, and who started their own summer camp, and the, the costs are going to be, that's my, the, the, and I don't want to harp on that, because again, we, we do want to make sure that we are providing the best for our employees. You did mention stipend, so, but is that something that we, are we equally, um, looking at either providing our own versus stipend? Because, so my former employee, during COVID, that's something that, that they did. Because, so my former employee, during COVID, that's something that they did, because they were seeing that, you know, the reason why employees weren't coming back to work is because, well, you know, I can't, my kids are at home, working from, you know, doing school from home. I can't leave them here, but, you know, if there's something where I can, they gave us, they gave, you know, employees a certain amount of money per month, that kept employees staying there. And it wasn't to cover the full cost of the daycare or the childcare, but it's a help. And so, I don't think, you know, there are many employees that are even doing that, or, you know, so it's, I think that would be a good, a good entry as well, to not doing a full-blown City of Salisbury childcare. But, you know, a stipend would even be a great help as well.
I think the main concern with that is the availability of childcare. So, there is a massive shortage of childcare. Getting, I know when I closed six years ago, I had a waitlist of three years.
Right.
I had people, I had clients who were planning their actual pregnancies around vacancies. Not kidding, I had one client who got it within two weeks. So, they were precision. But, I mean, it was one of those things that it's so, it's so, it's, it really, it's so difficult to get, that people are literally family planning around childcare availability.
Sure.
So, that's the thing we have to look at, is we could offer stipend, but if they have nowhere to take their child, then that doesn't offer anything.
But also, it has to be, again, these are people's children. It's got to be the best, the best of the best, because we could have childcare all day long, but if a parent will make the decision to sacrifice their livelihood and their cost of living and their whatever, to send their child to here or here, it has to be that we can't just hire, you know, we've got to look into all of that. It has to be, because that'd be a decision I would make is, okay, do I work here, and it's free childcare, but the criteria is not, you know, so that's going to be a definite.
So, there are some pretty hefty standards at the state level.
Oh, I know, Koma has it, but, I mean, you can also, you know, yeah, that's, you know, that's a yearly, you know, so that's, yeah.
We have things like the grant that we just received from Cowerk and Juniors Organization, something like that. If they were to invest something like that into the childcare, I mean, like that, we have those grant opportunities available to us that would get us the quality materials and things that we could move forward on. I think that, you know, I don't think, Andy and I have done childcare, and we know that, you know, you need the quality staff, you need the quality equipment. We, you know, it's one of those things, we may be able to use nearby city facilities as far as playgrounds, you know, triangulate that way, so we're being more cost-effective in equipments and things like that. So, that's something we can look at as well. You know, I think that we've got.
Sounds like there's enough demand to have a further in-depth presentation with some budgets and figures. So, we will work on that in a few weeks, come back with some proposals. It kind of popped back up, because there's a property close to a park that kind of came up. It was a house, we might have had to do some zoning stuff. But it just resurfaced that, you know, if there's an opportunity, you know, look at pursuing it. But we hadn't had this conversation before even.
And also work with HR to see if, not for myself, but see if council would be included in that. Not that that's on my radar.
So, that is a stipulation.
Yeah.
All elected officials have to do it.
Yeah.
Look, I have no need to dawdle there.
Yeah, dowdy-dick-dare, no. My child is four legs, so. All right.
Mine are all four legs.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I don't think, we don't have any on here, no, on the, Councilwoman Jackson, I don't think you have any?
She may have dipped out. She had to, she was not feeling well.
All right.
Wonderful.
Thank you. And I know we're going to.
I'm still there.
Okay, good, there we go.
Oh, yeah, there you are. Couldn't see you. Do you have anything to add?
No, it's just something that I think that is very much needed, even when we talked about it two years ago. I still think that it's crucial, and I think when the employees of the City of Salisbury see that we make this initiative to do it, our hiring, our opening will become phenomenal, because people are looking at childcare.
Yep.
And childcare is not like it used to be. I have a daughter who took her kids to childcare. And there were days when the childcare provider would say, well, I'm not open today, you know, all kinds of last-minute things, and they kind of put her in a bind to where she could have lost her job because she would have to sit home with her kids. So, I'm quite sure we won't have that, those issues at all, unless there's crises or something. But I think this is an ideal that should go forward. I really think so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Okay. And we're going to table the Council's order when we have all council here. So, it just gives us a couple more, some more time to look over it and for that further discussion. At this time, we'll have comments from administration and council. Mr. Kitzler, I know you just had the stage, but do you have any additional comments?
Just Happy New Years. I saw a couple of you folks on stage. I was at home with the kids, and the wife weren't feeling so great. But you guys are in the spotlight, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. We had a really good turnout. Estimate was somewhere around 2,500, 2,000, something like that. That's what I'm gathering. So, really, really was good. I think it was, I think everybody had fun. And, but appreciate the turnout, really was. It was great.
Yes. Councilwoman Jackson?
Oh, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everyone, and it was a very nice outing, but I got sick.
I think you partied too hard with us, Angie.
I'm getting ready to go off. I know, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Gregory?
Well, I was not there, because I was snug at home in bed by midnight. I didn't even see midnight. So, yeah, no, I just want to remind folks, because, you know, there is illness going around, please make sure you're going and getting your COVID boosters, make sure you are getting your flu shots, make sure that if you are eligible, please get your pneumonia shot, because, trust me, pneumonia is no fun.
No.
So, you know, make sure you're prioritizing your health, so that you don't get somebody else sick, too. Because there are vulnerable people out there who cannot get those kind of shots. And I think that that's something that we need to keep in mind when we're getting those. It's not fun, but it's necessary, if not just to protect yourself, but to protect your friends and family.
Thank you. Vice President Blake?
Well, yes, the New Year's event was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And I just want to give kudos again to city employees.
Yes.
Once again, we have phenomenal employees. They put that whole thing together. They coordinated it. Not only was it the arts and entertainment, it was also the police department, the fire department, field ops. So, everybody comes together to put these, I want to say, productions on. It was wonderful. Again, kudos to the field ops for really, you know, coming off of vacation, working longer hours, and trying to find solutions for the trash pickup. Kudos to that department for doing all that they do. And if you are healthy enough, please donate blood. The Eastern Shore, Maryland continues to be on the critical list, and it's vital. You just never know, it could be a loved one, or a family member, or a neighbor who may need it. So, please donate blood.
And plasma, too, right?
Oh, yes. And please donate, if you can, donate that plasma.
Thank you. Councilwoman Michelle?
I got my flu shot, and I was in bed with a flu on New Year's Eve. So, I tell everybody, get your flu shot. I got it. Anyway, Happy New Year to everybody. I'm really looking forward to this experience. So far, I have appreciated everything that everyone's done to help me, and I must give Kim a huge applause.
Yes.
So, I could not, you know, she's guiding me, and it means more than she will ever know. So, thank you, Kim. Happy New Year.
Yes, and I echo all the thoughts, the comments from fellow council members. And yes, Kim, so much so that my phone reminds me to email Kim, and so I think she's on my F5 now. So, strong work, and also strong work from the team.
You too.
Yeah, you all are phenomenal. And again, you know, this, Happy New Year to everyone. The ball drop was, it was so wonderful to see so many people and to see, I love when our residents are there. I know we, you know, everyone has life and things are going on, but to see everyone just happy and wanting to experience the best in 2024, I'm extremely excited. So, and to definitely work for our citizens, it makes me proud. So, with that, our work session is now adjourned. Thank you all.